Hey, the real Ron Ron here, coming at you live. We're uh, don't be nervous, I'm at your service, right? The loudmouth, we're doing what we're doing. Uh, this is Tim, I'm gonna turn it over to him. He's gonna tell you about some uh, new equipment and stuff, we're gonna get going. And uh, some different things we got going on in the future. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so we're taking this pretty seriously. Uh, we got some equipment, we've made a modest investment in this uh, podcast or video channel, if you will. So uh, things are gonna change, sound's gonna be a lot better, audio, video also gonna be better. So, we're looking up, the future's looking bright.
We're, we're trying to take care of y'all, right? You know, we know that y'all wanna hear what we have to say. We just wanna do it in a professional manner, cause we're professional.
That's right.
So uh, yeah, I'm excited about that. We have several topics that uh, we, we've talked about this week, that we wanna talk about today. Um, would you like to start with your stuff? Because you seem to be more organized than I am. I'm kinda like off the cuff type, ready to fight stuff.
Yeah, no, I mean, if that's the way you wanna go, we'd do it that way. So uh, now, I just wanted to talk to people, since we're, we're kinda reaching on a national scale. I mean, you've had people from Michigan reach out to you, I've had people from Washington reach out. So um, I think we're gonna focus more on the national.
Not just Michigan, Michigan, Arkansas, Australia.
There you go, Australia.
I mean, we're, we're worldwide.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
Mr. Worldwide, to infinity. Sorry, that wasn't copyright violation, by the way. Uh, so yeah, there were some things in our local community that have changed based on our requests. So one of those things was, they impound committees at our district. And they were doing it in a way that I felt was biased. So the principals would pick teacher, uh, put, pick parents to be part of these committees. And when I found this out, you know, I'm like, how do I sign up? It's like, well, you gotta be picked by a principal. And I'm like, well, I doubt they're gonna pick me.
That's not us, yeah.
So I suggested to them that they do like a jury pool. Where at the beginning of the year, you fill out a form or check a box and says you're interested in being part of these committees, to help make decisions in the district. Uh, and I just kinda forgot about it, cause she said she thought it was a great idea and she was gonna do it, but I didn't think she would, and she did.
She did.
So, you know, you, you don't know until you ask. And you know, you can't get anything changed unless you request it. So that's kinda the point of that, is like, sure, our district uh, made these small changes, but this is something that you can do if you try in your own district. Uh, another thing was they added the documentation to the board meetings.
I love that.
Yeah, cause we, we were going to these board meetings and
Loved it.
They would just vote, it just seemed like a formality, like.
It was like four or five little items, just no, no, no meat.
Yeah, and the public didn't know what they were talking about. Like recently, they had that uh, K twenty stuff come in, they're gonna pay them like seventy-five thousand dollars to, to create a strategic plan or whatever, and I'm like, I don't know anything about this.
Or, or they're creating policies and they're like, this is the first reading, but nobody has seen the first reading.
Right.
Well, now they're including the, the actual reading of the policy.
Yeah, so what the dist, uh, what the board members are getting, they're now posting. And that was because it was requested um, by myself, and I believe other parents had also brought that up before. Uh, she also thought that was a good idea, and she went with it. Um, now, that isn't to say that all districts are gonna be as responsive as ours have been. Cause there was a school district in Pennsylvania, I'll just give you an example here. This guy, Richard Robinson, he posted this op ed and he says, I'll just read the quotes. "With all due respect to the men and women who snarl, I'm a taxpayer, you work for me. No, I don't work for you, I was elected by people who voted to represent you." Now, Ron, what do you think about that?
I think that if you're an elected official, you work for the community that you're elected to represent. Regardless.
Yeah, even if the people didn't vote for you, you were still there to represent the community as a whole. So you get a bunch of people asking for something.
I'll give you a great example, I didn't vote for Joe Biden, but he still works for me.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir, no, he's supposed to, yeah, for what, the betterment of the, you know, of the country. Um, there's too, too much division going on.
There is.
Uh, and then to continue in this op ed, he says, "Don't parents always know what is best for their child? No, we don't. Nevertheless, if you are offended because I don't believe parents are infallible, you can always sue or take your child out of school, your choice." And that's actually been the response I've gotten from our district too. If you don't like it, go to Epic, that's what the Assistant Superintendent told me. With the current one?
Yes, Mark Officer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Seriously?
Yeah, which is weird, cause you know, in my opinion, Epic was created to steal money from taxpayers.
The dude that works, the Assistant Superintendent, right now told you, if you didn't like the way they did things, sue them or go to Epic.
Uh, no, not sue them, just I could go to Epic. He was saying, well, you have choices. To me, Epic isn't a choice. I, I, I don't see that as a choice.
He's gotta sit on him, I didn't know that.
I mean, you know, it's, it will, you know, it was kind of implied that by one of the board members as well. Um, last, well, last school year, uh, after one of the meetings. And it's like, what they said, oh, you don't have to go here. It's like, well, yeah, I'd rather. Um, but then uh, this person goes on.
I'm trying to stay positive, but y'all know me.
Yes, uh, yeah, this, this op ed that was published by this guy though, it just kind of degraded the community. Told them they were wrong and basically told them to F off. And, so that's a lot of what your people are getting at school districts, let them try to, to do the right thing. And you know, I think that's wrong.
Well, that's the taste that we have in our mouth as parents. Pre-COVID, I'll give you a real quick, pre-COVID, I had my head in the sand, I didn't care. I paid my taxes, I sent my kids to school, I trusted that the system worked. My kids were getting the best quality education they could, no matter where. And then pre-COVID, and then COVID hit, and they're like, hey, we're gonna take your money and you have to teach your own kids. And I was like, wait, this is BS, I'm not gonna do that cause I'm not a teacher, I gotta go to work, blah, blah. So then I start digging into all this and finding out that there's this entire system of stuff that is wrong, that needs to be fixed, and that's where we're at today. That's why I'm sitting here today, is because they opened my eyes to it. I didn't go looking for it, it was just, Amy, Amy Fishner kicked down my door and said, hey, here's a bunch of shit that's wrong. Or stuff that's wrong, sorry, I know we're not supposed to cuss.
No, that's, that's all good, don't worry about it.
I love Jesus, but I cuss a little bit.
It's hard not to, to start cursing when it comes to your kids, you know, your kids' wellbeing, the education they're getting, and the fact that you walk up to these people and they treat you like you are beneath them or too stupid to understand or to know what's best for your kid, you know, it's frustrating.
We, these are people that we entrusted with our children.
Right.
Our children's education, for sure. And you just, you just think that anybody that is in charge of your child's education has the best intentions for your child in, in, in their heart. And we found, not, we found it out the hard way here in Owasso, that some of them don't.
Yeah, yeah, and, and some of them believe that their views
Very few of them don't, I should say.
Should apply to everybody. Um, it's this moral high ground that some people think that they are, and a lot of this comes from the left. Some of it also comes from the right, uh, but they, they believe that they're right. So they, you know, shove this stuff down your throat, like, you know, with the trans stuff and all that.
Well, and I'm the same way, and I'll, I'll just play devil's advocate, I'm the same way with the Republican America stuff, right? The Patriot stuff, I'm like, ah, you know?
Right.
So I feel that, I understand that, but you have to see things from a different perspective, in order to understand it, so. Uh, but yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, speaking of the Patriot Act stuff, like, I love how they name stuff in these ways.
Right, Patriot Act.
It's like, we're gonna spy on you without warrants.
Patriot Act.
You know, it's a, it's part of the Patriot Act, is this warrantless surveillance that uh, George Bush thought was the legal legacy that came out of nine eleven, that's his words.
And I'll say this, I, I supported the Patriot Act, Patriot Act then. But they had just killed three thousand Americans, right?
Right.
So they took that emotion that I was having and they're like, oh, look what we can do.
Right.
And it's the same thing that's going on with like COVID and, and you know, everybody's getting COVID and dying, so we're gonna, it, it almost feels like exploitation.
Right, oh yeah, for sure. And then I love the parts afterwards where they were, you know, they were like, like, you know, you can't bring large shampoo bottles on the plane. Three point four ounces, that's okay, but you get into three point five ounces, you know, you're all gonna die.
Oh, can you imagine? I wonder if they resell that shit that they take.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but this is weird, like, you know, this.
It's overreach, it's overreach.
Right, and nobody died on a plane from a shampoo bottle, you know, that wasn't even like the point, but. Uh, and then little but slowly, they chip away at this stuff over time. You know, a lot of us screamed about it back then, it's like, okay, sure, this is a minor inconvenience to you and you feel like it's okay, cause it might save somebody's life. But then ten, fifteen years later, now they've got Chromebooks sitting in your bedroom and they're listening to everything you say, watching everything your kids do from inside your house, and that's where we came.
I got, I got a couple things, can we, can we jump around a little?
Yeah, go for it.
A couple things, a couple things. Owasso has a Chromebook for every student. Owasso, you were at the meeting the other night, Owasso has a hundred percent staff.
Right.
So I hear the news agencies throughout the state saying, there's a big teacher shortage. Ooh, God, did you hear that? Uh, there's a big teacher shortage, and it's because they're, they're not adequately funded, they're not getting paid enough, this and that. And I'm like, well, Owasso is a hundred percent staff, and I've, I've looked at several other districts. I know Tulsa is not, but why do you think, I know why, but why do you think that these schools like Tulsa and Oklahoma City aren't as staffed as say Owasso or Warner or some of these other rural districts?
Well, a lot of people attribute this to pay, and that might be one variable. But that doesn't tell the whole picture, because you've got, you know, they've done studies of this, you know, you look at the numbers. There are districts that pay their teachers less than have less issues with staffing those districts.
They've been there for years.
Right, and, but when you look at administrative costs, Loft did, recently did a survey of the, you know, what these schools are paying out and it showed that administrative costs in Tulsa Public Schools was increased by twenty-six percent from, I don't remember the timeframe. But education spending only increased by like six percent. OKC was even worse, it was three percent spent on education, that was the increase. And then forty-one percent increase on administrative pay. So these administrators are paying themselves more for whatever. They're building this monstrous administration and letting everything fall to the wayside. So tools and support for teachers fall by the wayside, because that goes under education. So a lot of these teachers feel like they're just hanging out there without anybody supporting them.
We need to look that up, because I spoke to a senator about this a couple weeks ago, and he said, no matter what, it's in the law. Uh, you can only spend either five, seven, or eight percent of your total budget for administrative cost. Well, what does that include? What does administrative cost include? And then there's, there's loopholes to where you can go up to forty percent if you word it this way or that way, and it's just, it's, it's my, they make it so complicated that parents can't get in there and figure it out, so they're just like, just whatever, just do it, I don't wanna do it. So uh.
Well, now the percentage increase I'm talking about is only a percentage increase, not necessarily the percent of the budget that they're spending on it, it's just the amount that, and I don't remember the timeframe, from the beginning of this time to the end of this time, they had increased spending by thirty-one percent. So it may still fall within that budgetary, you know, restriction that they're under. And I don't know what that is, but.
Well.
Um, and I think that has something to do with it, because you look at Tulsa Public Schools, they're having issues.
They're having closed schools, they can't find, yeah.
Spending a lot of money on their administrators and.
I think people leave bosses and they don't leave jobs.
Right, yeah.
I think, I think Deborah Gist is running people off.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know her personally, I don't know how she treats her staff, but I've heard from several people, even here in Owasso, that Fishner was a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Hated her, the board members didn't like her, uh, the community, you know, there's a lot of people out there that support anything that has an education beside their name.
It's cause, it's what you're supposed to do.
Right, they're like, well, if you don't support this person, you don't support public schools, and that's, you know, that's nonsense.
That's nonsense.
You can support public schools and, and not like what somebody does inside of the school or whatever. Um, I'm glad she's gone, I will say.
Oh yeah, Fishner, let's talk about something we don't agree on.
Yeah, so that.
I love Ryan Walters.
Don't get me started, Ron.
Ryan Walters and April Grace are doing a runoff, because Ryan stomped her in the, in the, what is it, the primary?
Yeah.
He had stomped her, he got forty-one, he got over forty-one percent, and she got, I think, just over thirty, but. Um, anyway, I love Ryan Walters, and here's the, here's what I get from people all the time when I say Ryan Walters, and if they're in opposition for me, they're like, Ryan Walters wants school vouchers, he wants to privatize school, he wants to destroy public education system as it is. It's gonna be disastrous. It's already disastrous.
It is disastrous, yeah.
What's he gonna do? It's like, it's like going out to a gravel pit and kicking a couple rocks around. What can you do to it that's gonna make it worse?
I mean.
Why not try something new?
In my opinion, I don't know that, that the route they're taking is going to help. I think a lot of the problems we have are completely self-inflicted, I think they're on purpose. I think they've done this to the point where you defund education, or you get rid of people, what have you. It, and this creates this situation where people would get so fed up with the public school system that they're, they want change. So the politicians who screwed it up in the first place, you know, and let's just say hypothetically, that they did it on purpose. Now these people below them are saying, well, please change it, and they're like, well, I've got the answer. So it, it very well could be, and it's the same thing they're doing with social security. Where they, they spend the social security money, and then they say, look, social security's about to be broke. It's like, well, yeah, it wouldn't be if you hadn't spent the money on things that you shouldn't have spent that money on.
I, I completely agree, every time somebody, I, if they're a public school advocate, they say, we're not adequately funded. My next, very next question is, how much funding do you need? What's adequate? Give me a dollar amount. And I've had one person say, if you paid every teacher in the state of Oklahoma sixty thousand dollars, that'd be it. I said, okay, thank you for answering that, I appreciate that. So you're saying if we paid every teacher sixty grand a year, we would be in the top ten in the nation for public schools? And then I get, well, that'd be a start. No, that's not the start, what's, what's, what is the solution?
There's a core problem.
You can't have a blank check and expect to spit out the same product that you've been spitting out for decades.
Yeah, and when you look at the numbers, uh, the schools that do well in Oklahoma, really anywhere, it's not those that are funded the most, it's not the ones that have the most money, always. So you can have a good education system without blowing a bunch of money on it. I mean, when you're spending money on crap, you don't need like, I don't know, let's say, a bunch of Chromebooks for kids that could've just used pen and paper, you know, and the parents would've happily purchased that, or people would've donated pen and paper to the school if they needed it, I'm sure. Um, so it, it really is a self-inflicted wound, I think.
It completely is.
Yeah, so now with Ryan Walters versus April Grace, this is a problem we have a lot in this country where you get two, in my opinion, bad choices. I don't like Ryan necessarily for quite a few reasons.
Give him just two, just give me two.
There's too many things behind him that don't make a lot of sense to me, like with the Echo stuff. I had written this, um, this Twitter thread about things that I found out about Ryan and, and his makings. Now, I'm sure Ryan is a good guy, right? He was a teacher at one point in McAllister, I believe, right?
He's still a teacher, yeah, he was teaching in McAllister, yeah.
And then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, he pops up as the executive director of this company, which then turns into Every Kid Counts Oklahoma, which was gonna then oversee like, I don't know, seventeen million dollars, something like that. It was, it's supposed to be dispersed among parents for, you know, uh, education stuff. Well, he also had reached out to Class Wallet long before he was even tapped as the Secretary of Education. He was communicating with them while he was still executive director of this, of this other company.
Which is fine, right?
I mean, there's nothing illegal with it necessarily.
What is necessarily, what does that mean?
Well, it depends on the conversation, it depends on the conversations that were happening between Stitt and I believe Ryan Walters.
Okay.
Cause if there were, you know what I mean?
I got you, I got you.
If there was this agreement that they were gonna do all this stuff, so, there's just a lot of red flags to me about Ryan. But, there are red flags about April Grace too. I mean, this lady was superintendent, was Shawnee, was it?
She still is.
And she let this dude, who was an accused, you know, molester or whatever, these kids go on, and she didn't do.
Promoted him.
Right, there, she didn't do enough, in my opinion, to do that. So, if I had to choose between these two, it would be hard for me to, to choose April Grace. While she didn't do the molesting herself, um, it's hard for me to back somebody who allowed it to happen or didn't do enough, in my opinion, to stop it. And let the, you know, but that's another problem, and she brings up a good point, that it's hard to get rid of teachers. Uh, and they, they can't talk about personnel issues.
Is it? You said something about a teacher and like, two days later, he was gone.
Well, but that was a decision they had made, and the board had to vote on it. So the board had to get rid of the guy. And they can't talk about personnel issues publicly, right? That was another thing, so we, we didn't know anything about it, we just knew that they were voting in executive session, and then, you know, it was obvious who they were voting on, um, because it was so close to when we, when we sent those emails or whatever.
Well, let me ask you this, knowing what you know about Ryan Walters, if you knew that Ryan Walters coming in with new ideas, shaking the bushes, mixing it up, would improve our children's educational successes going forward, would you say, no, I don't want Ryan Walters because he's A, a Republican, B, he says woke too much, C, he, he's from McAllister? I mean, if you knew that his ideas and his, his path forward would increase our children's successes, why not vote for that?
I mean, if I thought it would, then sure, but there's, there's a big question mark there about the voucher stuff.
I don't support vouchers.
You know, a lot, yeah, a lot of people are, and, and kind of that's, that's, the red flags all kind of point that direction.
But there are, some of our greatest schools in the nation have voucher programs.
I mean, they can work, um, will they do it correctly here? I don't know. I don't, I don't know enough about Ryan, I, and I honestly feel like he was kinda dragged into this, like.
Ryan's a good dude, he asked to meet you.
Yeah, no, I'm sure he is, I, I have no doubt in my mind that he is generally a good person.
Maybe we can get him to come do one of these with us.
Yeah, I think we should, um, you know, I'd like to meet the guy.
I think he would.
I, when he was over here at the fundraiser, I didn't wanna come over.
I invited you.
Yeah, he did, he did, and I'm like, I don't know, I'll probably make stuff awkward, so.
And you would've.
Yeah, I probably would have, um, and it's a fundraiser for him, I don't wanna come up here with my, with my science project, nah, no Ryan Walters.
He might've brought us more people and money, I don't know.
But see, and this is, you know, Ron and I would disagree. He likes Ryan.
I love Ryan.
I don't care for Ryan, there've been other candidates that he, you know, that he preferred and I didn't care for too much.
Oh yeah, don't get started on that though, don't get, let's, let's save that for another.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying in general.
Are you voting for Joy Hopfoster?
No.
Okay, alright.
Something's gonna change, uh, I, she, she's a really smart lady, but she's got some, she's got some red flags behind her too.
They all do, you have to have a threshold for the bullshit that you're willing to accept.
There were some deals, and I hate to bring it up, cause I don't really know enough about it, but there was a lawsuit between her and a landscaping company.
Yeah, I got the.
That, that, you know, she just didn't pay them for work that they had done, and then, you know, they ended up having to like, put a lien on her house or something.
Yeah, and there was also her campaign manager, Stephanie Alexander, I don't know if you know this or not, but they've got a, she was arrested too for improper, I don't wanna, I don't wanna misspeak and slander somebody, but it was like something to do with improper campaign donation, that was being like, funneled through some type of other, yeah. But it's all dismissed because the state doesn't have the money to take care of it.
And that's a problem with all of these.
All of them.
On the right and the left, they both do it, and then they both get mad at each other for doing it, and then whenever they get busted for, you know, either side, they're like, oh yeah, but it was me, so it was for a good cause, cause you know.
Why do we have a two-party system? Why can't we just all be who we are and go vote?
Yeah, I, and that's, that's the point of this whole video channel that we're doing. Because people, people agree on things that they don't realize they agree on. They can't stop bickering about small petty stuff. Um, and I, I, I don't understand it, you know, I, I get into it with people a lot online and I have to stop myself, because I realize.
It's distracting, takes up a lot of your time.
It's not productive, right, it's a, it's, it's problematic, and then I start feeding into, you know, the problems that.
And especially whenever you start going and doing things like we're doing now, I'll, I'll see if I can show you all this.
Um, and some of the equipment that we're gonna get will allow us to
Yeah, we're, we're.
Put videos and stuff on the screen so that you guys can see it.
We're still, we're still doing this, but this is, this is the stuff I get daily.
Oh, it may not, is it backwards? Oh no, yeah, it is, it's backwards.
It's backwards.
Read it to them.
Okay, it says, hey bro, what up? What you doing? And then immediately after that, it's like, I'm watching gay porn and blanking off. I can't say that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm watching gay porn and blanking off, and then the very next one is, do you smoke weed? Which I don't, I don't smoke weed, right?
No, no.
Um, if they had asked me if I drink alcohol, I sure do. But yeah, this is, and then we had some dude from Arkansas was like, y'all are both redneck hillbillies, y'all are a bunch of redneck hillbillies, like, there's only two of us, and if you say bunch, that implies that there's more than two, so.
Yeah, he sent me that text, what time was it? It's like, I don't know, it was like eight or nine, and I, I couldn't stop laughing.
Cause I sent it to him, I was like, is this your dumbass? What are you doing?
Yeah, he thought it was, he thought it was me messing around, I'm like, I'm a little more tactful than that. That's pretty funny, and that's a text message.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's not just like a Facebook message, that's, yeah, correctly, just, and my first, my first thought was, man, I bet that's Tyler.
Oh yeah, 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 I was like, yeah.
Yeah, cause him and his friends, they, they weren't too happy with us.
They hate us, but I don't hate them. I mean, we know, we've known each other for a while, you know that there's nothing in my house that says anti-gay or homophobic or anything.
Even I told Tyler exactly why I had a problem with him. I'm like, I'm welcome, you know, you're welcome to have a conversation with me, I was like, cause I, I think.
Yeah, we both invited him.
You know, I think he's, he's a very smart guy, Tyler, I'll say, based on his videos and stuff. And there's a lot of stuff that he and I will agree on, but there is a lot.
He and I will agree on with my kids.
So, you know, when you start filtering over into kid stuff and pushing them to do things, and that's just a bridge too far, sorry.
And, and here, we have so many people, so many groups, so many parent groups, so many different emotions and feelings and fights. We have so many fires going around, there's a guy up in Stillwater, I can't remember his name. Um, I'm wanting to say, I'll have to find it, but um, he's been on Fox News and uh, fighting for this book, these books, these nasty books.
Oh, like Flamer?
Like Flamer, yeah, and he's doing wonderful, and, and he's, he's, he's went and he's done, and and then we have like, uh, Reclaim Oklahoma Parent Empowerment Rope. They're, they're all about, you know, uh, these religious values in our schools and stuff. And uh, what else? CRT, there's gender, and we have these different factions of parents that are starting to wake up and be like, hey, this is important to me, and this one's important to me, and this one's important to me. And it's all one big problem. Why not just go to school and send your kids to school to learn to read, write, and do arithmetic?
Yeah.
And why do we have to include the other bullshit?
It comes down to compromise too, it's like, okay, you're okay with this stuff, he's not okay with this stuff, and you're not okay with that other stuff, so come to a compromise and say, you know what, we don't want any of that crap.
Right.
We don't want any of it.
We want them educated.
Right, they're, they're there to be educated, that's the focus, that should be the focus.
That should be the focus.
And you know, I wonder how much administrators feel pressure from parents who, you know, want students to learn that, you know, whites were oppressing blacks, and you know what I mean, directly this way.
Casualty, whatever, yeah.
Right, cause I wonder how much administrators actually care about that stuff versus what they're doing to, to try to appease a group they think they need to appease? I don't know.
And then they have other groups like teachers or teachers' unions, I feel bad for administrators, I really do. Especially superintendents, cause they're caught in the middle, they have to do the boards building, they have, the boards, uh, bidding, they have to do parents, and we've been hitting these superintendents hard.
Yeah.
Like, you have to be a soldier to be a superintendent these days. Deborah Gist, I mean, she's made of iron as far as I'm concerned, cause I went over and spoke at a board meeting, and, oh my God. Um, but yeah, they are, uh, and they're.
Getting it from all sides.
They're, they're trying to protect their teachers and their staff, and they're trying to do what the community and the parents and the board want. I, my props, my hats off to you, I mean, seriously.
And you gotta give credit where credit is due, like those things at the beginning that I talked about with the jury pool system, which I think all schools need to do that, for parent committees, pick them at random, don't let a principal pick those out, cause they're, even if the principal isn't trying to be biased, they're going to be if they're the ones choosing.
One way or the other, like, if you had a committee and they knew that you were wanting to do it, they would either have to pick you, or they would have to not to pick you, based off of something that was completely. Based off of something that was completely wrong.
Right, and it should just be completely random. So when that happened, the first thing I did, and I'm real critical of the of the. You know, the public school, especially Owasso. Um, I publicly gave kudos to uh, Margaret. This doctor codes, excuse me.
She's Margaret Coats, Mrs. Coats. I'm not gonna do it. I'm not ever gonna do it.
Yeah, as I was telling Ron, it's like, well, when I'm, when, you know, when I'm, I have respect for her, I call her Doctor Coats. If I'm upset with her. Uh, she's Marge or.
And it's not coming from a place of hate or negativity or anything. He knows why. I won't never do it until. She reaches out and tries to mend that relationship. But anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's, so you know, it's important to let them know when they do something good. Cause if all you ever hear from people is bad stuff, then that, you know, you're not even gonna wanna talk to these people. But if you acknowledge. Even if you disagree with them philosophically or politically, if they do something that you agree with or say something. Then you should also say that you agree because that's, that's kinda how me and you uh, became friends.
Yeah, you know, mutual, well, not mutual destruction, but mutual, I mean, we have to, we all have to live together. And when I go speak at the board meetings, you're hateful, but when I go speak at the board meetings, last time I think I told them, I appreciated them. Making the agenda so transparent.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. Good job.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So you don't always have to go up there and show your ass at the board meeting. You can go up there and tell them they did a good job. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, well, you know, it sucks cause you only get five minutes.
You do, yeah.
So if if there's something that's ongoing that you've been trying to talk about and you wanna get your point across. You only got five minutes to do it. So if you waste any time on, you know, talking about stuff that you're grateful for. Uh, and technically you're supposed to stay on topic anyway, but. But yeah, so in that, in that regard, but I did send her a personal email as well. And that's, you know, something good. She thanked me for the feedback, but. It was pretty, it was a, an administrative response, we'll just say it that way.
I don't hate teachers and I know that he doesn't hate teachers. We're not attacking teachers. When we speak up about concerns with public schools.
And you shouldn't feel like you are attacking them either.
No.
Unless you're attacking them.
Unless you are. I mean, then there are people out there that just, they, I agree. They, but we are not. Parents' voice and all these other little groups and they're not. They're just concerned parents that want to share a concern. And they're absolutely able to do that.
Yeah.
I love my kids' teacher.
Yeah, misrepresentation is also a problem where somebody has something that they they take issue with and it gets blown out of proportion from the other side.
Absolutely.
And then all of a sudden it turns into this like nasty, terrible, you know, conspiracy thing that's going on and.
Kinda like you with Ryan Walters.
Well, that was based on a lot of research I did. I made a lot of phone calls too.
I know you pissed me off with that. You really did.
I know, I I had people asking me to remove it. I'm not gonna say who, but I'm like. But you know, when I found information out that that negated something that I had already questioned, I put it in threat. You know, cause I'm, I'm about honesty and transparency and that's, you know, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
So what do you think about politicians that stand side by side and hip to hip with these OEA? Or these uh, these pastors for Oklahoma kids? And they're just OEA and they're OSSBA and and Ccosa and all these bureaucratic institutions. What's your feelings on that?
Uh, with regard to which policies? Are you talking about like the the books and stuff? Cause that was, that was something the pastors for Oklahoma or whatever, they were hating on parents who were trying to get Flamer removed from the school. And.
No, I'm talking about like John Waldron over in Tulsa. He's a House Representative. Talking about Jackie Poo Rosenkrantz out in 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 the city. Um.
The relationship between politicians with.
Yeah, they're saying that Ryan Walters or us or or these AstroTurf parent groups. Are coming out and we're attacking teachers and we're attacking public schools because we want pornography removed and we want. We want bullshit removed. And we just want stuff taught the way it's supposed to be taught. Reading, writing, arithmetic.
I think that goes back to the misrepresentation. Of course, they do it on purpose to try to make the other side look bad. They they wanna muddle up the message. And nitpick certain things that you say and then.
You're cherry picking.
Right, and then make you look bad. So.
Do you think parents like you and I understand that they're cherry picking and they're full of shit?
You and I do.
Both sides.
You and I do, yes, but I, the general public, I don't know, cause it just keeps going. You know, they they wouldn't be able to do it if everybody saw through what they were doing.
It's almost like it's a uh, it's a machine.
Right.
Like it's purposeful.
Yeah, they they wanna pit people against each other.
Why?
So that they don't know that they are as common as people actually are. I mean, cause let's face it, everybody wants their kids to be healthy. Everybody wants their kids to have a good education. Everybody wants a bright future for their children. So a country that they can, you know, thrive in when they get older. They want a good job. They want healthcare access. These are things that we all want.
Basic necessities.
Right, everybody, people on the right, people on the left. The difference is how do we get there? That's where everything starts to get messy.
Complicated, and and they keep it complicated so that you have to almost pick a side. Like we were talking earlier. That we feel like there's something coming up. It's in the air. It's like people. We're tired of being Republicans and we're tired of being Democrats. We just wanna be Americans again.
Right.
Right? And we just feel this need to get along to make sure that we see the next generation through. I do.
Yeah, I think a lot of other people want that too.
I'm sick and tired of this bullshit politics.
Positive response to our video because of that, because people.
Yeah, it really, it actually, it surprised me. It scared my life a little bit. It surprised me and uh, that we were so well received. Just sitting here talking.
Well, it's like, we was talking about Crossfire earlier.
Yeah.
Tucker Carlson, I don't remember the other dude, but all they did was just.
Who's man? It was Jon Stewart?
No, Jon Stewart was, he he came in as, he's basically the one that killed that show, but that's all they ever did was, I mean, I mean, just. Back and forth at each other and it was, it was pointless, unproductive, but it was entertainment. Then Jon Stewart comes on there and he's like, y'all are hurting us. You're hurting America. You're making people hate each other. You know, and you're doing it for, you know, for views or whatever. Um, killing the show.
I was watching uh, The Five on Fox News the other day.
I don't think you've ever seen The Five.
The Five is, they have five, they have four that are always there and then they have a s- a guest and usually it's a, somebody to banner off, somebody else, but. Dan Bongino was on there and I love Dan Bongino. Dan, if you're watching, I love you. You're my dude.
I've heard the name. I don't know much about his politics.
But Dan won't back down. He he is uncompromising. He he calls, he called uh, Garland a loser and he he hates, he hates the left and he. You you have to be able to talk to people in order to find a solution to a problem. And whether you like it or not.
We gotta live together.
You have to.
We're neighbors, you know. We're people that drive your bus or make your food at at the restaurant. You never know. Um, yeah, I mean, you gotta, you know, you don't try to crap on your neighbor. Because you have to live next to them. Well, it's the same difference with everybody else, politics aside.
Yeah.
I think the internet really has hurt this too because it's so easy to to just. Type something terrible out to somebody without thought. Um.
Yeah, just knee jerk reaction, just piss off.
Right, and that just irritates somebody else and they go on the defensive and they just, you know, build and builds from there.
It's not always like that. I've had some really, and Tim is one of my success stories on the internet where. You're like piss off, piss off, but then we come back to the table and we're like, hey, this is what I meant. And we've had some really wonderful, substantial conversations that have led to wonderful things.
Yeah.
And uh, so I've had several of those on the internet. I don't know if you have or not, but um, yeah. The persistence and the, hey, I'm not here to fight, I'm here to fix it.
Yeah, cause something I've noticed is that, and it's like that guy we were talking about, Americans for Prosperity or whatever, the guy that was calling us. He was saying we were AstroTurf.
And it was a fake account, but it was somebody we knew, but they, yeah.
He, well, he kept going back and forth and back and forth and then he was real hateful, but I just kept talking to him, just. You know, and then finally, all of a sudden out of nowhere, he starts agreeing with me. I mean, after six or seven threads long, he started agreeing with me and we found a common ground. While he still disagreed on some things, we were able to say, yeah, you know, we can agree on that. And and it kind of fizzled out the conversation, so he wasn't as hateful anymore. And that's, that's so important.
People get, people get so butthurt and their feelings hurt, butthurt. But I said butthurt.
Butthurt.
They do though. If you say something nasty to somebody, and I'm gonna use me in the example, cause I'm an asshole, but. If you say something nasty or something quick witted or sarcastic to somebody, it just shuts them down. So don't use my example. But stay fact, state your concern, and don't stray from that. Stay up in that fight and get up in there.
Right, it's.
Right, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong, but it, when you get, you know, upset or when you start getting emotionally involved with something, that's when.
Nobody cares about your feelings.
That's when things start to devolve, cause then it comes out in your words.
I mean, how many times have you seen my OCSN record blasted on Facebook?
Oh, man, yeah. Which reminds me of Blue Dot and then that video that she put. This lady.
Oh, my god.
So what did she say? Marshmallow?
She said this marshmallow complected kid.
Marshmallow shade or something.
And in the same breath says, you shouldn't be racist.
Yeah, no, we were, we were sitting out there and he showed me that and I'm like, what? That is, you know, when we, we were talking about like CRT stuff and I'm like, I'm like, you know, nobody should mistreat somebody else because of. The way they look or what they believe or their religion or whatever. I think most of us agree on that, but then.
I think any rational adult would.
It, right, and that's what she's trying to claim while at the same time making racist comments. What is her, what is her TikTok name?
Uh, Diary of a Blue Dot.
Diary of a Blue Dot.
I guess Blue Dot means you're a Democrat in Oklahoma. You're a blue dot in Oklahoma.
Put me down as purple, you know.
Yeah.
I'm too liberal.
Put me down as purple.
Conservatives and I'm too conservative for liberals. I get hate for most of it.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty conservative, yeah.
I'm, I mean, I'd like to think I'm pretty liberal, but I don't know. When it comes to like border, border security.
What do you think about the border security?
We should lock it down, I mean, to some degree.
I think it's funny as shit that Governor Abbott is sending them some bitches up to.
Now, funny?
Yes. No, I think it's right.
Is that productive?
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know.
What's more productive, Liam, than Texas? It's still the United States.
So the offer was, you can fifty dollars to what was it, San Antonio, or you can get a free ride to, I think it was Washington.
To your heroes?
Which, yes, is is pretty funny. I mean, that's pretty funny.
It's perfect.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's deserved. It's like, y'all want this open, you know, uh, but.
Tim, what's, what's?
What's the answer to the border?
I don't know. I know the answer, but I can't say it on here.
I mean.
But what's different about Texas as that in in Washington DC or New York? It's still America. If they want to come across, they can have them.
Yeah, I I mean, I I don't like it because.
And I'm not against immigration. I'm not. I'm eighty percent French.
Legal immigration is fine, but I mean, come on. You, I mean, I don't know of any country on earth that's like, everybody's welcome no matter what. Just come on over. Walk yourself across the border and you're, you know, now you can come in here and work and take jobs.
No, no, it's not even that. It's come across the border, we're gonna give you free shit. You can have driver's license.
Healthcare.
Healthcare, drivers, whatever.
Go to the emergency room. They have to treat you, which, you know, to a degree, I understand that. I don't want anybody turned away. You know what I mean? I don't want people, even illegal immigrants. Don't, no, no, you're gonna have to go die off in the sidewalk over there. You know what I mean?
But they're like, hey, they're from Honduras and it's bad down there. Have you been to fucking Tulsa lately?
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point. That's racist.
That it was, why? I'm talking about Turley.
Oh, Turley. I actually went up in.
They had like six people found in ditches.
In Turley? When was this?
In Turley or Sperry or whatever, off Seventy Sixth Street North last year.
What's, you know, what's funny is that Tulsa, on all these like crime shows where the cops are going and, you know, and they're they're uh, solving these murders. Tulsa's always on those shows and like most of the episodes are from Tulsa.
Let me tell, let me show you something. Let me show you something real quick. You see this? That's my big fat ass right there. And that's Steve Williamson. He owned IMSA. He's passed away. And that's Mary Fallon. I don't like Mary Fallon. And Preston, I'm gonna give you a shout too. Preston's my very best friend. And I I love Preston. Um, but I worked for IMSA and the reason I loved IMSA is because Tulsa was the thing. It was the second busiest system in the United States, secondary to King County, Washington, up in Seattle. We had more calls in Tulsa than anywhere else.
It's pretty bad.
It's bad.
Yeah.
There's a reason for that.
I don't, you know, when you, I wonder if, and I'm just throwing this out there. If there was some kind of uh, funding put together to make the buildings there nicer, so, you know. Redo the buildings, do redo the siding, you know, uh, even some of the houses in there. I wonder if you have something to take pride of in your community, if that will. Bring about a better, you know, behavioral pattern. I don't know. I'd like to see some research on that. You know, you know what I'm saying, right?
I like, most of them are nice buildings though.
I don't know. I deliver out there all the time. It looks pretty runny.
That's why I live in Owasso and I'll just be real frank and upfront. I love Owasso cause it's so clean. It is very clean.
Yeah, it really is clean.
Um, it's a wonderful city. I love it. Um. We, I don't, I I.
We're really close.
I've had some crime, I've had tires slashed and windows broke and rainbow bricks left on my front yard. I love you, rode on. Are you, did you ever get a picture of that? I have a picture of it somewhere.
We're, we're gonna have to post that in this video.
Um, but and my wife is like, we gotta get cameras because you're, you're just ignorant and people are gonna kill you. And people will come on there like, I'm not talking to somebody that posts under a fake name. I post them to the real Ron Ron.
Right, which is linked always to your real.
Always linked to my Facebook.
It would be hard to find you, the real you.
And he sent something about, I'm not posting to you because you're, you don't post on your, I'm like, I gave him my address. Here, here it is. I I don't have anything to hide. You post my OCSN, you post pictures of us. They, Melissa Remington, you know Melissa Remington, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, she's watching right now. What's up, Melissa? Hi.
Oh, she is.
Yep.
Um, she was attacked earlier from a a liberal's teacher union rep or whatever. And they put a big picture of her up and they said Tulsa Parent Voice.
Oh, wow. Now, this was from the Tulsa Public Schools people?
Yeah, some organization. And when you speak up, you're gonna get attacked, you're gonna get, your feelings hurt. You're gonna have something negative said about you because you're going against, I mean, that's just common knowledge.
Yeah.
But they've been hitting, they've been hitting us and Melissa and all these Moms of Liberty groups and and uh.
The Blue Moms, are you part of the Blue Moms? No, I'm not. I mean, I do identify as a female.
I tried to get in that group identifying as a.
Nobody knows that.
I did, I tried to identify as a Blue Mom and I was like, that's discrimination.
That's funny. Yeah, I actually did a TikTok video. It's like, my name, I know, identify as a female.
Oh, yeah. I swear to god, somebody's got a voodoo doll to me right now.
Well, it, you know, it's funny though because I am pretty liberal and I say a lot of these things. In public and I'm not always the nicest about it. I just, you know, I I state, I wouldn't say hateful, but if, if you say something stupid. You know what I mean? I'll quote it usually. And it upsets people, which I'm working on that too, so. Uh, but I still don't get as much flack from people as you.
It's because I'm better looking, I think.
That might be it. But, I mean, I think it's because a lot of this really hateful stuff is coming from the group that calls themselves and talk, uh, more tolerant. Than people on the right. You know, cause people on the left are, claim that they're more tolerant than people on the right, yet. A lot of the hatred and stuff that I see towards you.
Well, I told you about.
Is from them.
I told you about Elena Ashley, the TPS board member that asked me to come speak at her meeting.
Uh, I believe I remember that conversation.
She has, and Elena's the only person, only person that I know that is a board member in the state of Oklahoma. That hosts community meetings monthly.
Which is great.
It's fantastic. And she hosts this community meeting. She's, she asks, she called me, she's like. Can you come talk to these parents and tell them about Tyler and what happened and what's going on and this and that?
Now, she's a board member, right?
She is a Tulsa, she's board four, wonderful one. I love her and her momma. A strong, conservative black woman, love her. And uh, so I said, yeah, absolutely, I'll come over there. So I went over there and it was just packed. It was packed wall to wall. And as soon as this lady started speaking about, this is the agenda, this is who's gonna speak, blah, blah, blah. This whole, can I say, can I say Rainbow Coalition?
Yeah.
Okay, the whole Rainbow Coalition came out and they were like, no, you're talking about Chinese. Why do you call them Chinese communists? I was like, because they're fucking Chinese communists.
They're, they're literally Chinese Communist Parties.
The Chinese Communist Party.
I think they call themselves that.
Yeah. And this, this lady stood up in the middle of everybody. She's like, why do you keep calling? Yeah. And this, this lady stood up in the middle of everybody. She's like, why do you keep calling them Chinese Communist Party? That's, that's what they are.
Right, I believe they call themselves the, uh, the Communist Party of China, I think is the official name.
Yeah.
You know, CCPs.
I, I don't have a problem when my kids learn Chinese. I had a problem when my kids learn Chinese that was paid for by Chinese.
Yeah.
Period.
Yeah, cause there, there are a lot of agendas going on in China and there's a lot of conspiracies behind this too, but. I mean, there, there's, there's too many red flags for people not to, you know.
Especially in this atmosphere, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, cause they've got that social credit score where, you know, and it's in testing, I believe. I don't think it's nationwide. Maybe they've expanded it since the last time I looked it up, but basically if you're rude online or if you, um. What is Melissa saying there? We don't spew their propaganda, yeah.
I gotta.
Right, right, right.
Keep talking.
Ron's gonna be back. Um, now I forgot what I was saying.
Chinese.
Thanks, Ron.
Social score.
The social credit score. So if you're, you know, rude online or if you say something that disagrees with, uh. You know, the stance of the government, then you are, uh, then your credit score will go down. Eventually what this will do is it'll keep you from being able to get loans, it'll keep you from being able to get a job. You can be fired from your jobs if your credit score isn't high enough.
I've heard about that.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's their agenda and I'm pretty sure they would like to see that everywhere. Uh, yes, using too much electricity. Well, we saw what happened in Texas too.
My god, yeah.
With those, uh, those nest, uh, the thermostat.
Thermostats, yeah.
Was it were connected?
We, we talked about that, didn't we?
Not yet, no, that was ridiculous.
Talk about that, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I think.
Anybody's electric bill went up?
I haven't noticed mine, but I keep, I keep a credit on my electric bill and my water bill, so. It just eats up what I've paid into it, you know, and I don't always notice it, so. Uh, my wife was saying that the water bill has gone up too. Have you noticed that yours gone up?
Uh, not my, I, I have like forty seven kids, it, it always goes up.
Forty eight, I thought.
Yeah, well.
It is close.
It's, it's in the courts. Um, what else we need to talk about here? Elena Ashley, if you don't know who that is, check her out, she's awesome. But anyway, we went over there and the Rainbow Coalition stood up and they. They just sabotaged the entire meeting. They would not let us speak. They, uh, they. I mean, I, I had to leave. Police showed up, or police, however you want to say it.
Police.
Po, Popo showed up and, uh, it was bad, it was bad.
That's crazy.
And that's what they wanna do. They don't want anybody to have a civil debate or discussion or dialogue. Man, that's what we need.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and it's, it's sad because a board member who's elected is. Basically running a town hall is what I take that to be.
It was.
Asking, you know, infr- uh, you know, opinions about, uh, certain things and bringing in people to talk about it. And then get, gets protested to the point where nobody gets to talk about anything.
Oh, it was completely.
Not all for people protesting, but I don't think you should be going into. Public meetings and screaming about this stuff to keep other people from talking. I, that's. You know, kinda draw a line there. Stand outside with your signs and, you know, scream on the sidewalk.
Well, it's unproductive. It doesn't do anything.
Yeah, I mean, technically you could argue that it's illegal, cause that's a, you know, public disturbance or public nuisance or whatever.
And liberal man.
Man, I, you know, some people have gone so far off the.
It really, yeah.
Yeah, off the reservation that they're.
Uh.
I think that's a racist term too, off the reservation. That's okay, I'm native, so I can say things like that.
I gotta plug Ryan real quick.
Go for it, plug Ryan.
Um, Ryan is gonna be in Shawnee, Oklahoma on August twentieth. Ten AM to twelve PM at Coffee and Crafts. It's at Five East Main Street in Shawnee, Oklahoma. I don't know that I'll be there, I might be there, but, uh, go see Ryan if you're in Shawnee. They're having a lot of, Shawnee, isn't that where April Grace? Is the superintendent?
I believe so, yeah.
Um, if y'all are out there in Shawnee, you're tired of April Grace, you need to go out and look at. And, or meet Ryan Walters. And I think that I'm gonna go, but. It's from ten AM to twelve PM noon on August twentieth, Shawnee Coffee and Crafts. Wonderful coffee. I've never had it, but I'm sure it's wonderful. Uh, Five East Main Street in Shawnee, Oklahoma. One more thing, uh, plug real quick, Jinx, uh, Jinx City Hall. Uh, nine thirty to noon, uh, I gotta look this up real quick. Nine thirty to noon, Ryan's gonna be in Jinx America. Let's see here.
America.
Jinx America on August fifteenth, Monday, this Monday. You know what else happened on August fifteenth?
Uh, it was five days after my wife's birthday.
Is it really? Happy birthday to your wife, Lee.
Happy birthday to my wife.
Oh, she was born on August tenth?
Yeah.
Um, I was born on August fifteenth, forty five years ago.
Oh, is that, yeah, so your birthday's coming up?
My birthday's Monday.
It's today.
It's the thirteenth.
Okay.
Yeah. My birthday's Monday and if you wanna see Ryan Walters and talk to him, you need to go to Jinx City Hall. Uh, he's gonna be there in Jinx America from nine thirty to noon and I will be there. And I might even sign this hat with a silver, like a Ron Ron.
The real Ron Ron.
Yeah, the real Ron Ron and just pass that out if you want.
And I also wanna plug, uh, the fake Ron Ron.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, yeah.
You're out there? I know you're listening. We're watching you.
Uh, yeah.
The fake Ron Ron.
The fake Ron. Somebody asked me, they're like, if you're the real Ron Ron, who's the fake Ron Ron? And I was like.
Yeah, I went out, uh, created an account with the, with the same.
It was the same pictures.
Same pictures I just, uh, uploaded and made it look like a sketch. I'm like, I'm sorry, you ran. I thought it was funny.
Here's what I think we need from y'all. We need ideas of things that you wanna talk about.
Yes. Yeah, feel free to.
We have our own content that we talk about all the time.
Yeah.
But what's interesting to you?
Now, uh, now I will say though, this, I think, because once we get all of our stuff set up, the equipment should be here tomorrow. And we're gonna be messing with it and getting all that going. Um, we're gonna be more towards a national audience, because it's gonna be on YouTube. We're also streaming, hopefully if we can get it to work right, uh, to Facebook at the same time. Um, but I, I really think this should be more of a national thing and maybe we can do a separate.
Oh yeah, this, this here is national. I will always, and Tim's totally aware of this, I will always do the real Ron Ron when I need to.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's always been me and he can do Tim whenever he needs to, Tim.
Yeah.
And you, you're the manager of several different groups I've, I've been kicked out of.
Just the one.
Just, yeah, he, he banned me for one.
Oklahoma's concerned about coronavirus, that was my group. It's still there, but it's funny. It cleared out the moment I started hating on the mandatory vaccines.
But you didn't hate on mandatory masks and you didn't hate on mandatory lockdowns, which I hated on.
Yeah.
But I respected his. If, if he wants mandated masks and mandated lockdowns and wants to be told what to do, that's his business because he's an American.
Now, see, in my defense, the way I see it is that masks are no different from having to wear a shirt in public.
Oh shit, I don't have to wear a shirt in public.
Well, if you go into a store, you.
Then I don't go in the store.
If they create rules in the store, then right, you don't go in the store, right. But. The, in my opinion, the masks are such a small inconvenience and, but. My, I also had an issue with the surgical mask. These people walking around with the, or, or the cloth mask, that stuff never worked. I knew from day one that stuff wasn't gonna work. Like, get an N ninety five mask, they should have been pushing down those out to people, but. Uh, I was okay with that and the precautions that we took early on, because we didn't, I mean, we didn't know what it was. All I knew is that there was evidence that it was a bio leak from either China, from Wuhan China, or. University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, uh, wrote an article about it, uh, I can share it later if we.
You should probably share that, cause.
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to read.
Lot of research when it, when.
He's a researcher.
I am.
I am a hype man.
So I, I was okay with it, but the moment they started pushing these vaccines, I'm like, no, you ain't gonna inject me with any of your crap.
But it's still taking your personal freedom of choice away.
Um, what's that?
Whether it's mask mandate or vaccine mandate, they're mandating.
Yeah, I mean, I, there is an argument to be made, but I think from a community standpoint, that the. The, the thing that you don't get, which is a maskless face, is such a small thing that it should be allowed.
Okay. This is where we disagree and that's fine, cause if you allow the small things. The big things like guns and shit like that gets taken away.
You can make that argument, but we're talking about a very specific acute case of a novel virus. Now, of course, we're seeing monkeypox going around.
Polio, New York, you saw that, right?
Hennepah virus coming around. I mean, I, I feel like they're just unleashing.
I fucking hate election years.
They made in these labs, they're just releasing and hoping.
I hate election years. That looks horrible. I need to do some sit-ups or something. Yeah, it's election year. It's election years.
Yeah, a lot of crazy things going on.
What is the chances of COVID coming out when Donald Trump?
Yeah, it was, I, you know, I, I still believe that we created it right here in the United States.
You think so?
I think so.
I think it was created in China.
Evidence supports that theory and I'll, and I'll, maybe you don't know about this, but the University of North Carolina actually. Wrote a paper, they created a chimeric SARS virus from genetic material that they got from Wuhan. Cause the bat lady would go into the bat caves, get these, you know, samples or whatever. And they would do research and then they would share these protein databanks with the world. So the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill took those gen- took that genetic material, created, cloned chimeric. Uh, SARS viruses and then.
But, but then and then, where did it come out of?
I believe, because right before.
From North Carolina to China?
Right before the pandemic happened, there were military personnel that were sent into Wuhan. And they went to the Wuhan gangs.
From America?
Yes. There was about three hundred military members and I think we did that.
You really think that?
I think that, yeah.
I respect that you think that. Yeah, I think Chinese communist people are shitty.
Now, and it wouldn't be the first time that we've used biological weapons against the country. We did it with North Korea as well. Well, with Korea and the whole, when they were, you know, the Korean War.
Specifics, what are you talking about?
The Korean War, we dropped, uh, cold and flu viruses in there, we were dropping bioweapons, you know?
I've not heard of that and I'm a historical buff.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, look it up there. And they've been, we've been researching bioweapons for a while now, in fact.
I do know about Agent Orange.
So if, if, nobody knows about this, the twenty-three and me stuff, or you know, you take the genetic tests or whatever, a lot of that stuff went over to China. And a lot of that stuff went to researchers here. The problem there is that they can take genetic markers that are for a specific set of the population. Build, uh, biological weapons that target specific people, specific races.
DNA bullshit, yeah.
Specific races, specific families, um.
You really think that's happening?
Yes, I believe they have successfully done it to some degree. Uh, the problem is, once you release it. It will change and mutate and it will make its way out into people that it wasn't.
Oh, we gotta get some guests on here, cause I need more than just you, Tim, I love you. I know that you're a researcher.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll put the paper in there that I, that I wrote, but all, all the evidence that I saw.
You really think North Carolina, they made that?
University of North Carolina at, at Chapel Hill, yeah, and here's some other things. Um, the NIH, Pfizer. Uh, or it was either Pfizer or Moderna, I can't remember which one. They had an agreement to bring vaccine candidates to the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And I think within nine months of the coronavirus vaccine, or the coronavirus pandemic starting. Literally an agreement between, it was either Moderna or Pfizer and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. They brought them in there as vaccine candidates. This was before the pandemic ever started. And if you notice, um, Trump called Moderna for a vaccine. When there were only two deaths in China from COVID.
That you knew of.
Well, there were, there were only like sixty or eighty people that had been infected.
I knew as soon as it came out, I was like, we're all gonna die.
It was before China locked down. So how, you know, I mean, let's face it, you got sixty, eighty people that are sick with this new. Virus. Only one of them had died and this person was in the sixties, I believe. So you're already calling Moderna for a vaccine? Doesn't, doesn't add up. You know what I mean?
I can't stand it.
Yeah, I think they are, I think they had the vaccine in the works long before then. But that's conspiracy. Can't prove it, can't prove it, that's just, you know.
God, if we could though, right?
Yeah.
We'd be dead.
No, probably.
That's how conspiracy theories work.
I don't make it to the next, uh, you know, podcast, well.
Donald Trump, he said it.
You know what happened?
He said it.
I'm a goner, y'all.
You're gonna end up like, hey, Tim Ryan didn't hang himself.
Oh my god, Epstein.
Hey, that's another con- that's another one. Uh, let us know some topics, uh, we may or may not use them, I don't know, we're, we.
We probably will, but we always have stuff to talk about.
We always have stuff to talk about.
But we're trying to make it more organized, that's kind of the goal. We're gonna make it more organized, we'll have maybe certain segments.
And this isn't gonna be our background for it, but this is just like.
Temporary.
Temporary stuff. We're getting, we're getting professional, we're getting money involved, uh, people involved, we're, we're gonna. Mess around, yeah. We're gonna blow up, act like we don't know nobody.
That's right.
Is that riffraff? With the teeth? Do you all know about that? Somebody's gotta know about riffraff. Um, anyway, so yeah, message us. I don't care if it's good or bad, I don't, I mean, it happens to me every day, but, um.
Message me, I opened my Facebook back up.
When I pointed.
Josh Stanros, yeah, I saw him.
You know him? He's down in BA, he's a good dude.
Does he have a podcast or something?
He, he's influential very much, so I don't know about podcasts and stuff like that, but.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
He, he's down there with, uh, he did an event the other night with T W, T W Shannon and Mark Wayne Muller and stuff. He, he's big, he's big news. Josh is a good dude.
Get that plumbing involved, you know what I'm saying?
Man, are you voting for Mark Wayne?
I don't know. We'll see.
Can you even vote for Mark Wayne?
Uh.
Oh, you can vote in the general, right?
Yes.
But him and T W have a.
God, there's so many names, so many candidates.
So, yeah.
I can't keep track of them all. I can't keep track.
But I will say this, Dana Pareto, I know Tim doesn't like him, but he came over to Owasso School Board meeting the other night. And, uh.
It's not that I don't like Dana, I'll just say that. I don't agree with the politics.
I know.
Yeah. Uh, I'm sure.
Let's just, let's just leave it at that.
Is it, wasn't that his daughter? The, when we went to El Tequilla?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the daughter.
Yeah.
And then, uh, him and his wife and his daughter, I, I don't think his daughter, him and his wife came over and set up a table at the fundraiser with Ryan and everything, but. They're good people, um.
Yeah, it's like.
And he's coming around to some stuff, I'll show you some stuff here in a little bit, but he's coming around to some stuff that I think you would like. Um, but anyway, uh, yeah, politics, uh, school, public schools, we're all about the public school stuff. Politics, uh, COVID diseases.
Tim knows all.
Conspiracies.
Conspiracy.
Man, I'm not gonna rabbit hole.